Would you like to call the board the special meeting of the Morris Township Board of Ag�sment for June 10th on 2024, a statement of adequate notice, the requirements of the state with notice and to satisfy the statement, sortifying saying to be executed, please join me in the budget meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Mr. Trattonberg.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Yeah.
Ms. Simmons.
Here.
Mr. Benoit.
Here.
Mr. Kramer.
Here.
Mr. Woodford.
Here.
Mr. Ola.
Here.
Mr. Slate.
Here.
And I, Sonya, sent you over here.
Can we count for, where are we now and what are we doing there?
Okay, yes, Mr. Chairman, again for the record, David Brady of Brady &amp; Coriol on behalf of the applicant, we started back in December with the application, we continued the application in the end of March, and between December and March, we made some plans, made some revisions to the plans that reduced the number of variances and the extent of the variances, and to start off tonight, what I want to let the board know is that we've made a decision to further revise the plans by eliminating the office addition on the right-hand side of the building. Kathy Muller, who's her engineer, had a conflict tonight, she's testifying elsewhere, she did send me, however, a letter that has the recalculation of what that means for the variances, I'll mark that as A9 if that's okay with Mr. Oller.
Check the number, yep, P9.
P9.
Would that revision then keep the existing office or would that?
The existing side wall of the house will remain where it is.
Okay, so that little narrow.
Right.
Room will continue to exist.
Exactly. Know if I have enough for everybody. So with that, then, we are down to three bulk variances, all basically relating to side yards, we have an existing garage, first of all, the side yard requirement is 20 feet, we have an existing garage at 17.78 feet from the property line, and expanding that slightly, we're going to be 14 feet from the property line. The garage, poolhouse.
Sorry, Dave, but I'm not seeing that on your list, right?
No, it's not, these are the numbers that are revised only.
Okay, so this is not a list of all the variances?
No, it's only the revised numbers.
Okay.
Then, the carriage poolhouse, we had originally proposed to be five feet off the property line, we revised that to 14.25, the combined side yard that is required is 50 feet, we had originally had a proposal that was at 13 feet, we had revised that to 23 feet, and per Ms. Muller's letter, we're now at 29.44 feet.
What was existing prior to any application?
Prior to the application? We do not have any longer variances, we don't have any variances we're asking for for impervious coverage or for building coverage, I noted during the announcement of the agenda that there was an announcement that we had a height variance, we in fact do not, it is not on our list, there are two different ways to measure height, and Ms. Muller had consulted with Mr. Hanson, I believe, over that, we do not have a height variance, although that was part of the agenda. The agenda also indicated we had a fence variance for height, that was before we revised the walls along the left-hand property line and decided to go with a fence issue soon that because it is, I think, less than 25% solid, does not get counted towards the height, but we'll go through that with Mr. Tobia in more detail. So with that kind of setting the background, I believe that we had Mr. Dorn testify, I don't think Mr. Urson had a chance to cross-examine him, so we need to finish that, then have Celia DeHuff, our landscape architect, come up and testify, and Mr. Tobia has some exhibits that will put up on the screen showing the landscaping plan, and lastly, Mr. Tobia will testify.
Okay, so before we do all that, let's just go over the variances again, so I have them all in one place, so you have side yards for what you're calling a carriage house, pool house, right?
Correct.
And that's 14.25 feet where 20 feet is required.
Correct.
Your addition B is in boy for the garage, right, is that at 14 feet where 20 feet is required?
Correct.
Right, your addition D for the office is now omitted?
Right.
Is that the existing 14.44?
Yes.
Okay. She has a minimum side yard for, okay, that's your combined side yards are now different because you eliminated the office, so that's going to 29.44?
Correct.
Three, okay, there's no height variance, and Jim, or you know, his office will have to confirm.
Right, okay, but we did not apply for one, and I recall, that exercise occurred between Ms. Muller and Mr. Hanson.
Okay, so it's, but the, what I'm looking at says, and what I'm looking at is your last revision plan of 3424?
Right.
Right, so that shows a height of 40.5 feet, is that the height?
Yes.
Yeah.
There's a maximum height from the average building grade and a maximum height from the minimum building grade, and 40.5 is that second calculation, and both of those calculations are below the maximum height. Maximum height under the first calculation, the average is 35 feet and we're at 33.6, the maximum height under that second minimum grade calculation is 46.6 and we're at 40.5.
Jim, have you had a chance to confirm that yet?
I'm just reading the ordinance right now on the, on the building.
All right, so we're going to leave that kind of open for right now?
You'll see the two calculations on the right-hand side of the variance plan.
Okay, so we'll have to confirm that, but, all right, and there's no wall height variance anymore because you stepped the fence away from the wall, right?
Yeah, we separated the walls, and we also put a fence on top of the second wall, which will be, you know, almost completely transparent, because it will be a series of kind of wires that run sideways and we'll put a picture up.
And so, building coverage is now less than the 20%, right, she said 19.94?
Correct. Previously, we were at 20%, which was the limit, now we're below it.
And impervious, we are below the 45%, correct, at 42, okay.
42.24, 42.48.
Right, if we get to a conclusion tonight, and if there's approval, there would be a condition that there'd have to be signed plans confirming all these numbers subject to the engineering department's review.
Sure.
Right? Okay, I got them, thanks. Mr. Urson?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to be heard on the plan changes, I'd like to inquire, were these plans submitted to the board in advance of this hearing, the change in the plans?
I do not.
The changes were not submitted in advance, the change is simply a deletion of something, it's not an addition of something, it's not a revision of a shape of something, it's a simple deletion of something, everything is already on the plan, the board can certainly, as the chairman asks questions, see where the existing side of the house ends, and that's where it's going to stay.
Let me be clear, I have complete trust in Mr. Brady and respect for Mr. Brady, but here's the thing, the board is entitled to see these plans and evaluate them in advance, we're entitled to see them and evaluate them in advance, what I've heard tonight is that the engineer has changed a bunch of calculations, there's a letter submitted to the town, I don't get to cross-examine the engineer, that's just gone away, the engineer is now going to speak through Mr. Brady and give you new calculations that we're supposed to somehow react to on the fly, these are not minor changes, I think I just heard that the pool house is moving from five feet off the property line to 14 feet off the property line.
Actually, that was the last revision, that was in March.
Yeah, that's, the only change, correct me if this is wrong, Mr. Brady, but the only change is the elimination of addition D, which is the office.
Exactly.
I got another, I got another question, where is the AC units and the generator going to be located now?
They'll stay where they are.
Right now, they'd be inside the house.
They're going to stay where they are, they're going to stay where they are.
No, they can't, sorry, they'll stay where they are.
They'll stay where they are.
Okay, they'll stay where they currently are now.
And where is that on?
Yes.
About what they have to find.
But, very.
Oh, just talk to him.
Yeah.
Well, he was, he testified.
I know, I know, but right now, we just haven't the information.
Okay. There is just two, and to the back of the existing shed, called an office, where the existing addition on the. So at the right rear corner of the building? Behind the building.
So there approximately, where addition D is going to be?
Yes.
Is there a generator today, Mr. Brady?
No, no.
All right, so is the generator being removed from the plan then?
Yes, because without moving that portion of the building, it's going to stay where it is, we'll have to fit, you know, the AC and the generator, AC is already behind kind of where that said proposed addition.
Well, if you look at the plan where it says proposed one-story office addition, I think towards the rear of that, there's a box, there's a lot of, lot of information going on right there, but, you know, that might be the exact location of the air conditioner currently.
Right above where the PRO can propose.
Yeah, that's that box, right.
And that's, that's the opposite.
But, Mr. Brady, you understand that if you're, if you're not putting the generator in on this application, you're putting it in somewhere else along there, that would be in the side yard, and you'd have to come back.
We have to come back for generator.
Right.
Or we'll put it someplace where it applies.
We'll figure, we'll figure it out, one of the other, yeah.
Right.
We recognize that, so we'll either locate it where it doesn't need a variance, or we'll come back and ask for that variance if and when we get to that point.
Okay, so Mr. Urson raises a valid point about the 10-day rule for, for plans, but it's, it's really the board's call, but I, I think that with just the elimination of the addition, and the condition, should the board act on this favorably tonight, that the calculations in the zone chart be confirmed by the township engineering office, I think that would be sufficient, there's really no substantial changes to the plans, it's just the elimination of that office addition, right?
Exactly, we're changing it, relocating it, doing something else.
Unless, unless the board felt like they needed those plans in advance of the meeting.
Was there any feedback on this? Mike, if you have, I know that this text is about locating the generator, that would impact the neighbors also, as to exactly where it was going to be, because it would be within the side yard.
Well, maybe not necessarily, though, we'll have to look at that.
That's what I'm saying.
But for purposes of, of your application, you're omitting the generator entirely, right? So that's gone.
The yard.
Mr. Urson, anything else on that point?
No, Mr. Oller, listen, I don't want to, I don't want to slow anything down, but it, it does bother me that that's not competent evidence that's going before the board, it's going to be checked afterward by your engineer, who can't possibly check it on fly, and all of that is going to be done outside the purview of the board and outside the view of the data, that's not right.
What?
I think the math, the simple math of we're not going to have the addition on that side anymore, I'm sure Mr. Slate can do that, quote unquote, on the fly, the calculation is to impervious coverages and the like, we were compliant before, we're just more compliant now.
Yeah, and the only, the only thing it changes is the combined side yard numbers.
Right, and I'm sure, like I said, that's simple addition, subtraction, I'm sure Mr. Slate can verify that number.
Are there larger AC units coming in, do you know?
No.
No, sir.
So I do think the board has discretion to either require that under the 10-day rule or deem that explanation acceptable.
I would be much happier if this had come in earlier, especially because you go through everything, you're lining up, and you're set with the questions and what you're going to focus on, and now you're going to, you know, as we, a lot of the plans on, now look different, and we've got to like, on the fly, recalculate everything, that's my concern, and, I mean, we've got this, this sheet, council, have you gotten that sheet yet?
I did not.
Got extra one, and I can hand one out, as I said, Mr. Chairman, it's simple deletion.
I understand that, but the, the public has a right, they've seen all this before they come in here, I mean, they, I understand, like, oh, we're going, that certain things do change.
Right, and you can come, certainly come in with exhibits that don't have to be filed 10 days in advance, but I think when you have a deletion of a box on a plan, and you represent that everything on that side of the house is otherwise as-is, staying as-is, I, I don't think that's a revision that requires everybody a long time to digest.
As, as I said, I think it's the board's discretion if they want to impose, enforce rather, the 10-day rule, or if you think what we've just heard is sufficient, and you can understand that plan without having it revised in front of you.
And we, we could have offered that during the hearing, on, quote unquote, on the fly, it's, as I say, a simple, a simple thing.
Board members, any other board members with opinions on this?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
Regardless of what we think about that, would they still be able to have a testimony of other witnesses, or would that, I'm wondering whether testimony of other witnesses would complicate the issue we're talking about now, or whether it would be indifferent to it?
So one of the witnesses we haven't heard from yet is the professional planner, right, and this is one of the variances that the planner is going to testify to, so he's either, he needs to testify to the plan, like, what is the plan?
Right, is he here, he's here tonight?
Excuse me?
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, but how about other witnesses? This, I can really see both sides, and, and I want to congratulate the public for being here and speaking up because it was, because of your voices that the applicant has decided to make these changes, so it's already, it's already been, I'm not sure if this is the right word, but you've already greatly influenced people who are concerned about the development, neighbors, you've already, your voices haven't heard, makes our job a lot easier. But there is this issue, and I'm, I'm a little concerned that, that the loose end might be greater than we think, even though overall, it seems to have, it seems to have made the plan a lot more powerful, so I'm not really sure, would I feel comfortable with the program as changed? I think so, we've had other applications that have had some changes, and we're okay with it, so, but every application is different, so I just don't know what loose ends we're going to come across that we haven't identified in our discussion right now.
Any other board members want to play in on this?
Maybe I'm over worried.
No, I'm sort of lying also, but I think we have had many applications in the past where plans have been modified, things have been deleted, or omitted, and radically changed the plans that are proposed, so I think we could go on with this, council, do you need a couple of minutes, would you like to review the letter, the, this letter before we get going, you can take five minutes.
I could review it for the rest of the night, I have no one to question about it.
Right, right, the engineer's going to have to come back and, I guess, and testify, because this is not.
I don't need to review it, because the more prepared I get, the more I want to ask questions.
But I have to point out, Mr. Chairman, it's a deletion, the only change to any variance involved is a variance kind of on the opposite side of the property from Mr. Urson's client, and secondly, as I say, it's math, we're going to keep that same, it's not, the other things, while Ms. Muller may have indicated with the building coverages and the impervious coverages, we're already compliant before the change, the change doesn't, and we remain compliant. As I said, this is something we could easily have started here tonight, heard feedback from the board, and said, you know what, we'll delete that.
Okay.
With nothing in advance.
All right, I'm inclined to go forward to make.
That's true.
Can I just ask a question, just a point of order in terms of how the meeting is structured, I don't know, Mr. Brady's explaining this, we've heard from, I'm sorry, what was your name?
Mr. Urson.
Mr. Mr. Urson, would it be inappropriate, or is this, would it be out of order to, I'd be interested to hear from members of the public that are here, maybe give them a minute or two to see how they feel about this, in terms of, you know, because the deletion may, please submit, is there, is that inappropriate, or?
I don't, I think that would open up a can of worms.
Yeah, I think it's a board question, really, it's a matter of, you know, do you think the elimination of, of this side addition impacts this plan where you want to see the plan 10 days in advance to have time to review it and see if the engineering firm, you know, or Jim's office, you know, has, has a report that raises some questions for you, yeah, you know, I do have a little question on the height issue, but it's never been shown as a variance, right?
I only raised that because during the agenda reading, it was mentioned, and I wanted to make it clear, we've never asked for one, per the plan, we don't believe originally.
I can ask a clarification on that, because in the original denial letter from September 27th, the denial of permit, I wanted to get back to the height, because it does ask for a variance, if I'm reading this correctly, where it says, and that's why I wanted to ask how we got to the new height, and just to recap that, so on the original denial, I don't know if it was the original, but back in September of '23, it said, "The engineering plan indicates the proposed height of the overall house using the average grades around the house to be 39.26, mostly due to the property dropping down from the house towards the pool area, variance is required for this excessive height above 35 feet," so there was a variance being sought for this at September.
At that point, there was, that was from Mr. Hanson, as I recall.
Correct.
And after that, and before we had our December hearing, there was communication between Ms. Muller and Mr. Hanson, and we did not apply for a variance, we submitted because of that, there was a verification of the numbers.
Gotcha.
Trying to remember what the difference of, difference of opinion, difference of calculation, but I know that they had a communication about that, that's why we never applied for it.
I don't, I really don't want to be obstructive, but you can't testify about what the engineer talked about to the zone.
I, I understand that, but there's really no planned change before us with respect to height?
Right.
It's just.
I don't know why I said that in the agenda, but I didn't want any misunderstanding, we have not applied for a height variance, we do not need a height, height variance, we went through that during the testimony of Ms. Muller, Mr. Urson had a chance to cross-examine Ms. Muller, somehow it said that on the agenda, I assume, maybe taking out some old, old documents somewhere or something, your characters forward.
Thank you. I'm inclined to go forward tonight, does anybody have any problems with that?
I do not, Mr. Chair.
I don't either, Mr. Chair, but I do just want to confirm, what is the current proposed building height, the information that?
The current proposed building height is on the variance plan that has revision date 3424.
Right.
As I, if you look on the top right, it's building height detail, and then below that, it shows those two calculations that I spoke about, depending on the calculation, there's a different maximum height, and under either calculation, we comply.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
All right, so your average height of 33.6 feet is the compliance, right?
Right.
Okay. Okay.
All right. So I think if we're going forward then, Mr. Chairman, I think the first order of business is Mr. Urson did not cross-examine Mr. Dorn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record, John Urson, Shane Price again, Mr. Dorn, in your testimony in the previous hearing, you spent quite a bit of time in your testimony talking about when you have a new client, how you start to form programs, could you, could you tell the board about what inputs you get when you start a program for designing a new house or an addition?
Is the mic on, is this on?
Yeah.
Okay, so the program is what people are looking to have in their house for their addition or their renovation, so.
Is the voice up?
I'm sorry, oh, okay, so typically, anybody will come in, they'll say, typically, I want a three-car garage, you know, I want a family room that's 24 by 24, the master bedroom, I want a little sitting area, seating in the area, and it, I'd like to have, you know, four, four bedrooms that are en suite, you know, playroom in the, in the basement, things like that.
And then from what the. And then from what the potential client tells you, that's how you begin to build a plan for the house?
That's correct, yep.
And so in this case, what did Mr. Ewing tell you that he would like in his program?
We talked about the, the problem with the garage.
What problem with the garage?
That's too narrow and there's no, there's no entry from the garage to the house. So there's no mudroom. He has an outside, currently has an outside stairwell to the basement that I said, well, you know what? If, if in the, in the addition that we designed, we can incorporate that and close that up so that there's no drainage into it, there's no rain that's going into it, and, you know, you have a nice warm house to circulate in.
Anything else?
Uh, yeah, he told me he would like to have four bedrooms en suite. He did tell me that he'd like me to look into, you know, doing something with the side addition, some kind of an office, and a, a formal dining room, that we kind of changed the, the space of it. We talked about how where he grew up. There was a house that he visited that had an octagon room that he really liked, and if we could incorporate that, that would be important. Also talked about having an outside terrace for entertaining. And I think that's probably more, but that, that covers most of it, I would think.
And when he told you that those were his interests, did he talk to you about whether or not he had already purchased this house in the as-is condition?
Yeah, I think that was pretty obvious that he had already bought it, yeah.
And so he bought it in the condition it was, and then he came to you with this list of seven or so wants?
Yes.
And in his application, he indicates that the justification for this application is that the house is laid out in awkward fashion. Did he tell you that?
It, it is.
No, did he tell you that?
I'm not sure whether he did, but I probably told him it was.
And in the application, he indicates that the rooms of the house are less than adequate size?
They are.
Wouldn't that be a good reason not to buy the house or buy a different house?
Not necessarily.
So not necessarily how?
Well, because he, if somebody likes the neighborhood, they like the feel of it. They, they get to know it, they look around, and they find out where they'd be comfortable. And I think that's what he did.
And did you speak to him about the process of applying to expand the size of the house greatly?
We talked about the fact that if he needed, that there was a possibility that he would need a variance.
So in your designing of the program, you didn't know that a variance was needed? You said maybe there'd be a possibility of a variance?
I, I always use those words because I don't know until I actually study the site and do, and do a study of my own to be able to establish if there is or is not a need.
Mr. Dorn, I'm not trying to trick you. I'm asking you, I'll ask it a different way. Would it make a difference to you if the applicant came to you with a house that was already violating side yards or a house that was conforming? Would that make a difference in you developing your program of wants?
No.
That's what I thought. So in your program of wants and your design of this very large addition, you didn't consider the current encroachments to the township's zoning ordinance?
Well, once I, I started to design it, I saw that there would be possibility. I mean, there are so many houses these days that almost every one of them.
How about you just testify about this house?
Okay.
And I'm asking you specifically, when you were designing this house, you did not take into consideration the fact that before you started your program of wants, it was already encroaching and violating the township's zoning ordinance?
I looked.
You did not take that into consideration, that's what you just said.
Wait, I did not consider, I'd go over that again, because you say you're not trying to answer something.
When you designed the house, the addition to the house, did you know at the time you designed it that it was already encroaching into the township's zoning ordinance inside?
Yes.
And you designed it this large anyway?
Well, you say large, but it, it's, it's conforming as far as lot coverage and building coverage.
Let's focus on the side yard setbacks. You designed a very large, you can't deny that, addition that you designed to be five feet off the side yard setback. That was your design and the original proposal before this board.
That's correct, yeah.
What I'm, what I'm pointing out is that when you designed this, you did not take into account the fact that this house was already in violation of the side yard setback, and your proposal based upon the wants was to encroach in that side yard setback further.
As an architect.
It's a yes or no question?
No, it's not, not to me. As, as an architect, we have to, I design the way I think it should be. I know that.
I, I understand that, and you ignore the zoning.
Let him, let him. You're gonna let him finish or not?
He's not gonna answer the question.
Well, then you can repeat the question again, but you let him go on for a little bit, and then maybe he'll help you reframe your question so you pin him down.
As an architect, I consider the, the lot with all its issues or not issues, I talk, we, I consider the scope of work, and then I design it. And then the reason that we come to the Board of Adjustment is because that word adjustment is in there. And it's up to the Board of Adjustment and, and everybody we listen to, we listen to the folks that live approximate to the, to the house. We listen to what their concerns are, and we make changes. That's the process that this board does, and that's what we did.
You're explaining the process of the zoning board to me. I know the zoning board. I'm just pointing out that you designed the house based upon this program of wants, and your proposal to the board was not to be satisfied with the current side yard encroachment, but to go further into the side yard, to go five feet off the side yard. That's correct, right? That was the first proposal?
Yes, it was, sure.
And as you sit here today, you are now making a compromise to the board that you'll only be 14 feet off the side yard when 17 is required.
It's 14, yeah.
You testified that the applicant wanted an extra garage, correct?
Correct.
And do you consider not having an extra garage a hardship that the board should consider?
Well, if you know the neighborhood, you know the problem with parking. So I do, I, I was concerned about the neighborhood. And if I can create parking and therefore a garage on that site, that will, in, in essence, gives us four cars in garages, and it allows probably four cars to park on the site. That, to me, is, is a very positive thing.
I didn't ask whether it was positive. I asked whether you considered an extra garage to be a hardship that justified further encroachment inside.
I think.
I don't want you to object to that. A hardship is a planning concern, not an architect.
Yeah, and he's here as an architect. He's not qualified to answer that.
Mr. Dorn, you, you testified in the previous hearing and tonight that one of your parts of your program was to find a fourth bedroom in the house, correct?
Correct.
And are you aware that when Mr. Ewing purchased the house, it had four bedrooms?
Yeah, totally inadequate.
The bedrooms that he purchased were totally inadequate?
For what he wanted.
And you're, are you aware that the listing of the property also had a fifth bedroom downstairs that was listed as fifth bedroom slash office? Were you aware?
Well, realtors often label things incorrectly.
Were you aware that the listing contained a diagram with a floor plan that listed a room downstairs as the fifth bedroom slash office?
No.
You were not aware?
No.
So as part of your program, you were searching for a fourth bedroom, but that's because the bedrooms were completely inadequate when Mr. Ewing bought it?
That, that's not how we do it as architects. I don't really, I consider the mass and the planning of it. I don't really care that there were, there was some fifth bedroom that didn't make any sense at all.
Can I get the, the, the floor plan back up to the upper?
The new one, Mr. Urson, or the existing?
Uh, this, this one will be fine.
Which one is this one?
This looks like the second floor elevation. Could I have the, the slide before?
It's the first floor. What floor do you want?
First floor?
This is the first floor.
Am I asking for the basement then?
No, you, you may.
What's underneath the two-car garage, that's what I'm looking for.
That's the basement.
Very, thank you. So, Mr. Dorn, the area that is, that's labeled pool house on the top, which, which addition is that? Is that D? It is A, I'm sorry. So, so when I, I'm just gonna step over here to. When I'm referring to addition A, I'm referring to this area over here.
Can you stay over here?
I'm sorry, it's the basement level of the pool.
Okay. And when you point it, the audience could see it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Board members couldn't see what you're looking at.
Okay, so, so it's, it's addition A, the, the ground floor. And it's on, so on the record, it's sheet A 1.0.
Okay.
Now, Mr. Dorn, this addition A, this addition increases the encroachment into the side yard, correct?
Yeah.
And the, and it encroaches into the side yard three, about three and a half feet, rough math.
Correct.
And could you tell the board why it's necessary that your two-story pool house encroaches an extra three and a half feet into the township's stated zoning side yard?
Well, once we decided that in order to make the garage, the main garage viable by adding three and a half feet, we considered using that as our, as our setback line because from the, from the front of the house, you really don't get to see that. And, and we actually pulled it in a little bit more than what the garage was. So there's, there's a planning decision there that seemed to make sense to me.
So if above this, you only had a one-car garage, you wouldn't need to encroach?
It, it, it's all, it is only a one-car garage. It's too deep, but it's one wide.
And in order to not have addition A encroach into the side yard setback, there's no real reason that you couldn't eliminate the dining area or the kitchen or the bathroom or two ba, two closets. In fact, two closets might do it, right?
Well, you're looking at the basement. I think you have to go up to the first floor.
Well, we'll start here.
Okay, well, I, I think you have to start at the first floor because that's the logical spot to start.
Okay. Just for your testimony before the board, is there any reason that that addition, addition A, could not shrink three and a half feet in order not to encroach into the neighbor's side yard?
Yeah, I think there is, yeah.
Because you really need a dining area located some minimal amount of feet from the sitting area?
It's part of the design, yeah, that's.
Because it's part of your design and part of Mr. Ewing's wants. Is there any other reason other than your aesthetics and Mr. Ewing's wants that that couldn't shrink three and a half feet?
It would ruin the design of it.
That's interesting you say that. Let's go to that.
Okay.
So in your testimony, before this board last time, you testified. Can we go up one floor, please? Okay, so now we're looking at the first floor elevation, A 1.1. I thought what was most interesting tonight in withdrawing the office application was your testimony at the last meeting. Your testimony at the last meeting was that that office addition was absolutely necessary and would ruin the building if you didn't have it. Do you remember saying that?
I, I could have.
Either remember or you don't.
Well, I, I don't.
I have the quotes.
You, you don't have, if you say it was in there, then it was in there.
Your testimony was that if the board did not grant the, the bump out for the office, that it would ruin the geometry of the house. That's what you said?
That's what I said, definitely.
Okay, but tonight it's okay to withdraw. It doesn't ruin the geometry of the house?
No, that's not the reason why we're withdrawing it.
No, no, I asked you. You testified before this board, under oath, that that addition was necessary, and if the board didn't grant it, it would ruin the geometry of the house.
If I said it, I said it.
Okay, and tonight, you don't need the addition and the house is fine, is that correct?
I still think that that office, the way we designed it, is much better than leaving the addition that's there. But the neighbors to the right really, really had an issue with it and re-eliminated it.
So on addition A, if the neighbors really, really have an addition and objection to addition A, you'll pull back that three and a half feet on, on addition A? Same reason?
Wait, wait, it's different than that. The, you, I know where you're going with this. You want us, you want me to say that that's what we did on the garage side?
That's what I want you to say, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, well, you're wrong. I'm not gonna say that. Because on the right-hand side, that, that was a much better geometry for an, an office. It functioned better for, for Mike, but Mike, Mike said to us, we all got together, he said, "Listen, I can't, you know, I don't want it. I, I want to have people that, that I live next to be a good neighbor," so.
That applies to addition A as well?
No, it doesn't. Because what, what happens with addition A is that it's a functionality of it. What we do is we correct the, we correct the garage that's existing. We don't expand any further towards the sidewalk, side yard. Actually, it's even less than that. And from the front, you don't really see it. You don't see it, it, the massing of it, we kept in from where the, where the main garage is. So it's a totally different thing. The, the parking issue and the garage issue is much, much different than the office issue.
So the office that you were replacing, when you testified that the office addition was completely necessary, that was an office library that was listed in the listing as having custom millwork radiant heat, and it was 24 by 10, right?
I, I didn't testify to that. I bet I remember.
And, and your testimony was that that was completely inadequate, a 24 by 10 office. That's why it was absolutely necessary to have that bump out?
The geometries make much more sense.
And you pulled it back because the neighbors objected?
Yeah, Mike did, yeah.
Okay. So you, you understand the analogy now. You understand the analogy that you're building a pool house with a seating area, a kitchen, two closets, and a mechanical room. There's not a reason in the world it can't move back three and a half feet.
The problem is.
And the only difference between the two is that you're acknowledging that the neighbors on the one side were upset about it, and you're ignoring the neighbor on the other side.
No, once, once again, you're, you're mixing up things. Once again, the garage issue and the parking issue is a lot different than the library issue.
Because you have to have four-car garage, not three?
No, it, it has to do, it has, there's a lot of, a lot of parts to that, yeah.
Right, but the main part is that currently.
Let him answer his question.
The thing is, is that it was four-car garage, one is one that Mike collects. The other is, is that when his grown-up daughter, children come, they have a place to put their car. They also now have a place to park in that parking court, which not too many people have in that neighborhood. There are only, I think, three other houses that have three-car garages. And it looks, it always looks as though everything is crammed in. In this case, it's not crammed in. There's adequate parking. There's parking to get people off the street, and it works, I think, actually very, very nicely.
The same way you thought the office worked well, telling the neighbors.
I, I did think the office worked really well. Yeah, you're correct.
Okay, we're arguing, let's keep arguing with you.
The, the plan, could I have a 2.1 up? 2.5, please? So, Mr. Dorn, you were emphasizing to the board that the, that the, the view from the street would not see the mass of the new pool house and two-car garage, correct?
Pretty much, yeah. Until you go past the house and look back over your shoulder, yeah.
But you can't deny that the mass of the pool house and the two-car garage is substantial from the neighbor's yard?
I don't think so, I think it looks fine.
I didn't ask you whether it looked fine. You specifically testified to the board that one of your programs was that as you were driving down the street, you would not see the mass of the building, that is, the pool house and the garage.
And I think for the most part, you do not.
Correct, but if you're in the neighbor's yard, you certainly see it 14 feet off of the property, two and a half, three stories straight up.
Well, yeah, she, you're a neighbor, sure, that, that's obvious.
So when you were designing it, you were designing it for the look from the road and the hiding of the mass from the road, but you didn't make any accommodations for the mass from the neighbor's yard?
I certainly do. I made it look architecturally, in scale. It's, it, we maintained the brick and I think there's absolutely nothing wrong with it, that it looks odd.
You like the way it looks?
I do, I, I wouldn't have drawn it if I didn't.
And you think that justifies the encroachment into the neighbor's side yard?
I, I'm not saying that that's the sole reason for doing it. It's the functionality of it that I think makes it work. And if you live in that neighborhood and you have, you have any, any relatives or guests that come, you would appreciate what I did there.
I'm sure, thank you later.
Okay, let's leave it.
The, uh, plan that you submitted to the board, those windows in the pool house, they all look straight out onto the neighbor's property?
They're behind, they're behind the house. They look at the property, obviously they do, yeah.
And in the plans that you submitted, you haven't provided the board with any lighting details of the lighting of that addition?
It's not a requirement. And we certainly aren't going to be blasting floodlights out there. The appropriate sconces that are code compliant next to the garage door will, will be there. There are no, there are not going to be any floodlights at all and any.
But do you think when you were encroaching into the neighbor's side yard setback at two and a half, three stories, that someone might ask you about what the lighting would look like from the neighbor's yard?
Well, it's, it's a bedroom and a suite up there. And I don't think there's going to be any lights on it for probably 90% of the time.
I have no further questions, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other members of the public have questions?
So before we hear any public questions, I just want to point out that Mr. Urson's office, I believe, represents several neighbors or just one?
One, exactly.
Just one, okay, thank you.
Yes. Hi, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Mr. Wade, what, what number are you on, spring broke, right?
I'm sorry?
What's, what's your house number?
Forty-six. I'm, uh, one, two doors away. Three door, actually, he's the third house over. Okay. Now. The house is at least 3,500 square feet, you would agree?
I, I wouldn't, I don't, considering the basement, well.
No, not, not counting the basement.
I, I don't think it's that much, but.
Is it in proportion to the, the houses that are in the neighborhood?
I, I think some of them, but not all of them.
And, uh, how old is the house?
I would imagine probably nineteen, twenty, nineteen thirty.
And, uh, hundred years, a lot of people have lived in that house, I would imagine.
I, I don't know.
Well, people have lived there pretty consistently, I would think, in that neighborhood, correct?
Houses have always been, were smaller back then, for the most part.
And the house itself has a two-car garage?
Totally inadequate, two-car garage.
And why is it inadequate?
Because it's too, it's too narrow. And if you, if you, if you ask a hundred architects and a hundred realtors what a two-car garage is, they would say between 22 feet wide and 24 feet wide. Because I think nineteen fifty.
All the houses that were, original houses were built there, were built with this type of garage. And there have been many families that have lived there with this two-car garage, correct?
I don't know, there's some three-car garages. I think it's, uh, 23, 50, and 55 in Spring Brook, there are three-car garages, which makes a lot more sense.
But we're talking about the existing property right now.
I don't know whether they were existing or not.
So the existing properties, the two-car garage, and the families that have lived there, whomever they might be, have lived there for a number of years, have used a two-car garage?
That's the situation, yeah.
And your client lives there by himself at the moment, correct?
I don't know what that has to do with it, but I, I have to ask him.
Well, do you know that there's more than one person living in that house?
I do not know that.
You do not know that? And you planned a four-car garage for how many people?
Mr. Chairman, I'm trying to object to this line of questioning because how many people live in the house and whether someone wants a two-car garage or a four-car?
I think what he's trying to, uh, establish is that this house has been very satisfactory to people from generations.
I don't know how to establish that with his crossing that initially.
But I live in there.
No, I had to testify to anybody, they were satisfied and then said. And we certainly have Mr. Ewing's testimony, he's dissatisfied with the garage that doesn't work.
Okay, you can bring that up, but I think he's on the right track there. You can continue.
And the, uh, the four bedrooms present in this home, correct?
Yes.
And there's two full bathrooms on the second floor?
I think so. I think so.
Let me ask you this, when you designed your, your project, did you ever go inside the house?
Yes.
You looked around?
Sure.
And you're not sure if there are two, two bathrooms in there?
I have a huge amount of projects that I'm working on. I design not because of what is necessarily in there, but what the needs are for my client.
And so the needs are that the two bathrooms are inadequate?
They're inadequate, they're old, they're too small. And today, in today's houses, everybody wants on-street bedrooms.
And when you say old, how old are the bathrooms?
Some of them might be original.
How about the one that was built within the last ten years?
I, I don't know.
You don't know that?
No, that's, that's not my job.
Not your job?
No.
Because it's your client's job to live there and use that bathroom, right?
While he's there?
While he's not living there, right?
I, 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 I don't know what that has to do with anything. But what is there and what he uses, I don't know what that has to do.
And I gather you rearranged the interior of that house by actually moving the staircase to the second floor, right?
The staircase is awful. The rise and run are terrible. And if you, if you're, have any disability at all, it would be extremely hard to go up and down.
Do you have some guests or clients who go buy another house?
Oh, my God.
Why would I do?
No, no, I don't have to answer that.
Let's, let's get to parking, how long is the driveway?
How long is it?
No, I'm asking you.
I, I don't know, I, I, I do the math.
How many cars can you park in the driveway now?
You could, now?
Yeah.
Two and a half.
In the driveway itself?
Yeah, if you're lucky, you mean a, a, as you go down?
Absolutely.
It's a terrible scenario.
Question is, how many cars can you park there?
I don't know. I don't know what that question has to do with anything.
Your job is to answer the question.
No, my job is.
Mr. Wade, just ask the questions and if he doesn't know, he doesn't know.
You have a two-car garage now, that's, I guess, a tent and one in a three-car garage, not four, one by side by side?
No, the new garage has two side by side and, and it's one, the, the one in the rear is one wide, two deep.
And so it's, it's a two-car garage that has depth for two cars?
Yeah.
And how do you get the second car?
It's a collectible car.
Okay, and the collectible car can go in the existing garage, if you can?
He uses daily cars he would like to have in his garage.
He would like to have.
What's that?
I said he would like to have this system you're waiting to develop.
It's, it's like anybody else in America. You can, if, if, you're, you're free to decide what works for you or what doesn't. If you're good with a one-car garage, then hats off to you. But that's not what I was hired for. I was hired to design a house that at the end of the day, Mike Ewing would enjoy it.
And you do agree that the house that Mike would enjoy is quite different than the existing house?
Not really.
No?
No.
And, uh, and take into consideration the fact that Ms. Sellers who lives adjoining, maybe sitting in her yard and her patio, looking up at this, uh, three-story building?
Not three stories.
If I'm looking at it from the street?
Yeah.
I'm seeing two levels, correct?
Correct.
And if I'm looking at it from the rear of the property?
Well, then that's not, then that's not sitting in her backyard, that's sitting in his backyard.
We'll change the question, let's just, just look at the property itself. There's four sides to the property, correct, to this garage? Right?
Of course.
Okay. One side is the street, looking at it, two levels.
Correct.
Looking at it from the seller's side, she sees three levels.
It's two levels.
What happened to the bottom?
A wall is.
The wall covers it all?
Wall covers most of it. And then there's a, there's a, a really great, uh, planting design that Celia has done for it to help to cover that.
And right now, you don't even see that because there's trees and trouble there, right? You don't even see the property on it. Or haven't you been there?
Oh, I've been there many times.
If I'm sitting on the patio on the seller's property?
I haven't been in her property, so I don't really know what, other than the fact that there are some trees and bushes there, which we are going to demonstrate that our new design is going to satisfy any issues that may be, may be existing there.
That's wonderful, you're going to satisfy Ms. Sellers', uh, issues with, with plantings and trees?
We're going to satisfy what we think is the right landscape designed for there. Something that would, something that works in the neighborhood, something that works for Mike, and something that works for the project.
How about Ms. Sellers?
I, I think it's going to work fine for her too.
Did you ever ask her?
She, she, she.
My question is.
Okay, your question is.
Did you?
I tried to speak to her a number of times, which she didn't. Right here at the Board of Adjustment, I went up to her and I started to try to talk to her and she wanted nothing to do with me.
And she was represented by council?
Well, then there's the reason why I can't talk to her.
Well.
Besides the fact that she refused to talk to me.
Okay, I think we're arguing back and forth, let's move on.
And Mr. Wade, he didn't testify about a landscape plan, so these are questions about his specific testimony.
Now. The driveway area and parking is no different than any other property on the street, isn't it?
No, I think there are definitely different scenarios and configurations for garages and driveways. Like I said, there are three properties, 25, I think 50 and 55 where there's a three-car garage.
My question is, but other than those three that you've mentioned, isn't it pretty much standard, two-car garage neighborhood?
It depends upon what you call standard. I, I look at it as a, as a neighborhood that has gone through different design changes. And I think there's a real need for three-car garages.
And the question is, this house, is it typical of the Spring Brook home?
I don't think it's typical, I think there are other houses like it, but I don't think anymore it's typical. If you look at any of the houses in the neighborhood, other than that immediate area, and even in that immediate area, there have been reasonably large additions and renovations shown.
Without variances?
I don't know that that's the case.
Now. Is this property looking at Spring Brook Road itself pretty typical of the type of home there? Size-wise?
I think there are houses that are typical of that, but there are other houses that are not. They're, they've been renovated, they're changed, they're bigger. They're expanded.
So no variances, thank you.
I don't know that.
Any other members of the bubble?
Good evening, I'm Gloria Carson, K A R S T E N. And I'm at Spring Hill Lane. And I am not a direct neighbor of the, uh, requesting people.
Where, what did you say your address was?
Nine Spring Hill Lane, thanks. Not Spring Brook.
Right, that's why I asked.
So I am not adjacent to the property being questioned. From what we've heard from the developer, there will be what they're calling either a cool house or a guest house or a carriage house, uh, which contains two bedrooms, a bath, living room, a dining room, and a two-car garage. As we all know.
This is type of questions, not the.
I, I have to preface it to get the question.
But, Mr. Chairman, that's not what that pool house contains.
Well, then, that's, I mean, just, let's limit the question.
Okay, um, why is this not considered a zoning regulations do not allow a second living structure on a single property? This sounds like a second living structure, except for the fact there's a little door going from the, the octagon and the roof.
That, that, that would qualify it as a continuous dwelling.
I mean.
That would qualify it as a continuous dwelling, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
That is a second dwelling?
It would meet the definition because it's continuous.
Okay, well, it is a second dwelling, um, isn't that prohibited by current zoning regulations?
No, it's not a second dwelling.
It's not a second dwelling.
Why not?
Because it's continu-, it's, it's continuous, they're joined.
Okay, but five minutes after this committee approves it, they could lock a door, make it a standalone second, second living residence?
No, they can't, it's against the law.
Not legally, right.
Are you going to file again for?
Why should, what do you mean, when am I going to file again?
If you're having a, if you're renting it out, you're B and B.
He's, he's not renting it out.
Well, how do we know that?
Because it's against the law. Ask them.
What, what someone does on their own property?
That's not, that's not. Why don't you ask the board?
Yeah, it's.
It's not a two-family home, there's no proposal to be a two-family home. All right, it, it is not, there's no proposal that this be a two-family home. It is a one-family home.
That's right, there's no proposal for it.
Right.
Which doesn't mean that's not what would ultimately happen.
Well, if he did, then he'd be in violation of zoning ordinances and he would end up in municipal court.
So it sounds like it's a technicality with coming off the octagon and anybody can put in a lock.
It doesn't allow him to rent it out to a second family.
A lot of the neighbors are concerned about a second living.
From, from the amount of people in this room tonight, I would think if they recognize there was another family living there as well, the town would know about it right away.
Even, even if it was a related family, an in-law street?
If it's family, they can live there.
So if the zoning, if, if this organization feels comfortable with that, I bring it up as an issue that I believe many of my neighbors are concerned about.
Right now, we're concerned with questions from Mr. Dorn.
Okay, well, the question was that this is a second living. Obviously, what we want to get through now is they get approved, but what happens six months later could be something different.
Yes, that, that would be testimony as opposed to asking Mr. Dorn questions about the architectural plans. Do you have any other questions?
I guess the general question, why couldn't all these wonderful developmental changes be done within the current zoning laws?
Mr. Dorn?
Why are we even here today?
There's a, there's a.
Do you want to mention a question?
That conforms.
There's, there's a thing called Board of Adjustment. And the word adjustment means that the board can act on changes. They either vote for it positively or against it. That's why the board is here. We've come before the board, we've made a lot of different changes. We have only, only two very, from what I think is a very minor variance, and that's side yard issues. We, we comply on our lot coverage, our building coverage, our height coverage, everything. And anytime, we, we have tried to do whatever we possibly can to appease anybody's issues.
Are some of the neighbors not appeased with your plans? Aren't some of the neighbors not appeased with your plans?
We're allowed to ask for a change. That's what we're doing. You're allowed to voice your opinion. And then at the end, the board will decide whether or not we have, we have done as much as we can to satisfy the needs of-
But aren't the needs and wishes of the neighbors as important as the-
Okay, we're arguing specific plans about specific questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Leah, New Gen, 38, Spring Brook Road. Mr. Dorn, what is the current square feet? Because you've made this change, so my calculations are not now correct. And I don't have my calculator to do it on the fly, but what is the new calculation of square footage?
I can do that, yeah.
Dave, has it got it here?
There's no plan, I have to see it.
The square footage of the house?
Yes. Total square foot.
Yeah.
Just the first and second floor square footage?
Yes.
Uh, we're taking out 13 feet of the first floor.
Total square footage.
So whatever it was.
If you have another question, you can ask, she's going to calculate that for you. We are not over on lot coverage or building coverage.
That's not what I'm getting at, so I need to-
Yeah, we're 13 feet less, so. Yep. That's what we used to be, minus 13 square feet.
So 24, 68?
That's what we used to be, minus 13, so we're at 24, 55.
24, 55.
That's the square foot, right?
I'd like to know the total square footage of the hall, of the proposed home.
That's just the first one.
And then you subtracted the garages, right?
Yeah. Your proposed building coverage is 3,987 square.
Yeah, we want the total square footage.
She wants, she wants heated space. She wants square footage, she builds heated spaces. You can pull up that chart again, that's what you're applying to building program.
Basically, you're asking square footage for, like, you would calculate it for tax purposes?
Yes, the total.
Yeah, so it wouldn't count the garages.
We got it in the second floor. Everything but garage, basement, 254 or 6,000 square feet.
All right, so the entire first and second floor, without the garage, without the basement, that's what we're looking for? 4,905.
Four, 4,905.
But, wait, but the walkout basement is not, it's finished area. So is it not-
Second half of the basement?
We can add that.
Add the basement?
I mean, typically, we don't include that, but-
If we add the basement, we're at 6,915.
6,916.
In your last testimony, didn't you claim that this was a similar property to the Mongies' property on Armstrong Road?
I, I may have. I don't know what the exact square footage is of Mongies'.
I recall you were saying that.
I, I'm not disputing that, I may have said that.
And you don't know the Mongies' square footage and acreage to be able to make that?
No, no.
So the, the Mongies' square footage is 4,577 square feet?
I'm going to check, Mr. Turman.
Yeah, you're, you're not here to testify, you may ask questions.
Oh, let me play with them. You also just mentioned other three-car garages, and you mentioned 50 Spring Brook Road. Do you know that square footage and do you know?
No.
The lot size?
No.
So I can't tell them? I have to wait to-
Yeah, yeah, he, he said he doesn't know.
Okay. So I see two AC units, are there any other AC units in this property?
There, there won't be, those two will, will be the ones that remain.
There won't be any other? How can, as an architect, how can two AC units pool 6,916 square feet?
Because, because the way, the way the HVAC systems are done now is that they're much more efficient. The, the insulation quality of it is much more efficient. If we use, um, uh, packaged units, they're inside the house, so, no.
Where is the proposal for the generator? There will be a future proposal, is what you're saying.
Did you not hear, did you not hear what was discussed?
Yes, you didn't mention that there's a possibility for a future proposal.
But the generator's been withdrawn from the application, so if, if they come, if they wanted a generator, they would have to place it in a location where it's conforming to the ordinance. And if they couldn't do that, they'd have to come back to the board for a different variance. But right now, that's no longer part of the application.
Have you, I, I liked some of the testimony before about the garage. And you have claimed that, about the parking on the street. You've mentioned 50 Spring Brook Road. Have you looked at their driveway? Have you considered other options, like expanding the driveway into the front yard, just like 50 Spring Brook Road?
The topography wouldn't allow it, it's a different topography. You, you're shaking your head, I, I don't know why.
There's arguments there, in that topography, I-
There's a total different topography in those houses.
So, have you examined that you could set that garage addition? You could set it over and still maintain the size that Mr. Ewing would like and give some relief. You could architecturally look at that.
It would, it would have a neg-
It might not be as pretty, but it could be the-
It would have a negative effect on, definite negative effect on, on the structure and how it functions.
Have you considered other three-car garages that are, they are called, now I'm blanking. Um, no, that, um, the houses that go straight back. There are- Why have we, now, I, we lived in Madison. Madison has smaller pieces of property, all these railroad houses. Unfortunately, they're not as perfect, but that's what they do to be able to get a three-car garage. Have you considered that to help the neighbors with that house?
What I, what I considered was that once we expanded the totally inadequate two-car garage, that you can't hardly call it a two-car garage, we actually pulled it in further than, from the side yard than what that was. We thought, I think that that's good planning when you do that. And if we, and to further push it in, it, you know, whether it, if you pushed it in two feet or three feet more, it's going to have the same visual effect as if it was where it is and it functions a lot better and it looks like that.
But you could achieve Mr. Ewing's wants with a railroad house. And not go through the setback violations, which not-
I'm not, I'm not sure what you're talking about.
You could get his square footage, you could get his garages.
It's a, it's a totally different design.
It is.
And it's, it's a design that I don't think-
But it wouldn't encroach neighbors.
It's not a design that I think works. I think it's more important that the design works and the functionality of it works, and we try to maintain that side yard setback of more than 14 feet, which we get, which is what the front yard, front garage is. So, yeah, we, we consider it an awful lot. I, I would have loved to have been able to drive the driveway down underneath and put garages under everything, but it's impossible to do that. We did the math on it, and you can't do it.
No comments, please.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public?
My name is Joan Ferrari, and I live at number six Spring Hill Lane. I had, I had asked a question on that one of the last meetings, what the definition of a residence was. I don't recall that we even, we ever answered that. Have you all found out anything since that last meeting, the definition of a residence?
Hi, Joan, I don't think the town has a definition for residence, but let me just check.
Is there one from a zoning standpoint? Is there one in general?
No, there's no definition for residence in the code book.
So, my, my concern is the pool house. Is it, is it independent? Are there any shared heating systems, cooling systems with the main house?
Well, we haven't designed the HVAC system, but I don't know what that has to do with whether or not it's connected to the housing house.
Well, if they're all on one system, it certainly is-
Well, most of the time, most of the houses that I've designed today, they're more efficient, more economical, and they run much better if you have multiple systems. And you can use, you can take a, a single system and break it into zones. And that's the best way to, to design HVAC systems.
So, so you really have, you really are connecting the pool house to common systems?
Well, the, the toilets and the sinks and everything are common systems.
But I'm, I'm talking about utilities, the, the, even the heating systems.
Well, he, heating systems are, I mean, in today's environment, heating systems are extremely important.
Well, they always are.
Yeah, but no, they're more important now that they function well. And, and the more they're broken up, the better off they are.
Okay, so what is the answer to my question?
Uh, what is your question?
My question is, have you connected them in the same systems or are they independent systems? Does the pool house operate independently of the house?
If we use a hydronic system, then it all, it'd all be one boiler.
But what do you, what are-
I, I haven't decided what we're doing yet.
So that's-
The, the system that's there right now is a hydronic system. It's a hot water system. And we can do a, a, a water-to-air system with that, where we create and locate VAV boxes that work both on the air conditioning and the heating system, so it's all one boiler.
Well, with the, with the air conditioning system, will that be an, an extra unit?
No, no, they're, the VAV boxes, they also have a refrigerant line that go into them. And so, dependent upon whether it's winter or summer, whether you want cooling or heating, those two systems work in tandem with each other as one system.
But there, so there will not be a, what, a third air conditioning unit? There won't be an independent one for the pool house?
No, not necessarily. We haven't designed it yet, so, you know, we wait to see.
Okay, I guess my, what I'm thinking is if you've got independent systems, if you're planning independent systems for the pool house, does that make that, but considering the, the accommodations in it, does that make it a residence? A separate residence?
This is the same question.
We, we, we've, we've discussed it before, and it is not.
It is not a separate residence. The, the-
Based on?
According, based upon the plans, the, uh, Addition A is connected to the existing house, the revised existing house, and therefore it considers to be one structure.
But how is it connected?
It's connected-
How permanent and how, how significant is it?
It goes through the dining room and into the proposed, is that correct, Mr. Dorn?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, something went in, on the other side, now I forgot. Oh, I know what it was. The clearances on either side. There's nine feet on one side and 14 on the other side, which is 23. But it's according to this, there are a total of 50 feet required, which means it's taking up, it's only allowing half of the, the clearances. So it's taking up a very significant part of the property.
Well, it's, it's not nine feet anymore, it's, what is it? It's, uh, the, on, on the right-hand side, it was nine that we originally proposed, but we moved it in to match up with the addition. And it's, it's on the house now, so that's, that's existing. And then on the other side, we, we're, we're-
When you look at the 50 feet combined, the total we have is 29.4.
That's still a little more than half of the 50 feet.
Well, just wanted to make sure you had the right number, that's all.
I know, I'm just, I'm, I'm almost all heads. Okay, I'm still not convinced that it's not a, a, a separate, a separate residence because with, with independent systems and no more than, barely-
Joan, it's still time for questions only, you'll have an opportunity later, okay?
I know that.
Okay, I know you know.
Okay, but my opinion is-
Thank you.
Any other members of the public with questions?
Tricia Tony, 59, Spring Brook Road. Just three questions. If you're putting in a split system, you're still going to need a condenser outside. Will you be putting and showing everybody where the condensers are going to be outside for your AC system? Make sure that it's not infringing on those-
Anything that we, anything that we do, once we design it, it'll be within the setbacks and it'll be less, it, it'll maintain lot coverage and a building coverage of less than what we can do.
So it won't be taking any more of that side, side area that we're talking about for the variance?
No, no.
It'll be in the back?
We, we, we had to, we, we put them in the back. There, there are multiple locations that we can put them that would, would comply to the zoning.
But to make it clear, Mr. Dorn, the two condensers that are currently on the right rear of the property are going to remain.
Right.
Or maybe be replaced with that location.
Well, well, we're on that subject, excuse me for interrupting. Where the existing, uh, offices, okay, and the one that's going to remain. You've got the AC, AC and generator delineated in there. But just beyond that, there's two, two boxes, it looks like about things are going to be removed. What are, are there, what are they and what are-
I think you're talking about the two, the two boxes that are, yeah, that, that's the existing, that's where they are now. And so that, that's where-
But I thought you said they were back by, uh, in where Addition D was.
No, no, they're, I don't know what Addition that's called, but, no, they're-
It's Addition D.
Yeah, so they're, they're going to be where they are now.
And they're shown inside Addition D.
They're shown in-
Right, but then, then one of those two little boxes sitting outside of, uh-
To the right of where you were proposing to put the generator.
I, I don't know what that is.
Yeah, right, right by the 19, uh, what, sorry.
I mean, we have it dotted in, so I don't think that's-
Yeah, I know, so, so, but I don't know, what is it? Is it going to stay, is it going to go?
I don't think there's anything there.
I, I don't think there's anything, yeah, it might be old plans.
That's what I'm thinking, that they might be old plans.
Okay, but they're not the air conditioning units?
No, the air conditioning- Yeah, they're- It, it might have been something that showed up on the survey.
Mr. Toby just showed me a picture as part of an email go-through. Doesn't show anything there, it shows the existing air conditioner, so the board will have to feel it.
Okay, okay.
There is something.
You will, well, you want to challenge a question about that? Okay, is there any other questions?
Uh, two more.
Okay.
First, I was going to ask, or second, I was going to ask, did you know that for a garage, I was a full-size car and a full-size operator- a garage, I was a full-size car and a full-size operational hovercraft larger than my husband's Jeep Charger? So that was in that, that small garage that you explained?
It, it doesn't, that doesn't negate the fact that it's, it's inadequate.
Okay, uh, so, it's good enough for a hovercraft. Last question, last question, was just, did you know that that house was actually the host of many neighborhood parties and was considered by many of us to be one of the premier top houses in our neighborhood?
I, I don't know how I would know that.
Okay, good enough. Thank you.
Thank you for telling us.
Ms. Nugent, you had another, oh, wait, there's some, you gotta let everybody else guess, but I have a question first. Did you have a question, ma'am, in the back? Two rows, three rows in front of you. Do you have?
She was just letting her through.
Oh, okay. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm John Mondelli. I live on 11 Carton, I'm below Springbrook. And my question was in regards to drainage or rain in relation, given how big the footprint of that property is, as far as drainage to adjoining properties as well as properties below.
That would be the engineer.
And Ms. Muller testified already as to the design and the drainage design.
Yes, and I think our engineers reviewed it also, so that's right.
Okay.
So I think it's, I think that's been...
Addressed.
Yes.
Okay, the other question is the height variance in relation to encroaching on the side property. Is there any sort of rule as far as going to the maximum height variance, so, and violating the, the side variance also?
And, and you're asking that, is there a reduced height allowance when you're encroaching?
Closer.
That, that's your question?
Yes.
No.
No, there's not.
Okay.
And again, to be clear, there is no height variance.
Right, right, but he's just asking, is, is that exists?
Does it, does it go down lower, or does it get closer to the side of the property?
Can you receive, what's your address?
11 Carton Road.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other members of the public with questions? Yes, Ms. Nugent, you line up again.
The agent, Virgate, Springbrook Road. From what you were answering, Joe, I'm very confused that you're, you told me only two AC units, then your words before to her were not necessarily two, that you hadn't designed the systems yet for the addition. So, isn't this an incomplete design to be able to state to me the only two, to her not necessarily two?
No. If, if you, if you were hiring me, you wouldn't want, hire me to do construction documents. Typically, what we do is we go to the board with plans and elevations. We don't, we don't put mechanical systems into them. And to answer your question about, so there, there's no ambiguity here, the systems that we, we plan, there, there's a, a number of them. Unless you're a mechanical engineer, you're not privy to all the ones that we have. But anything that we would do, if, if we needed bigger, or if we needed bigger or more condensing units, they would be located in a position on the property where it wouldn't affect the lot coverage, the building coverage, or a setback.
So you wouldn't go later, because you answered my question saying just two.
There's only two.
There are only going to be two.
We, we can't...
When I asked, would there be an additional?
We can't, there would not be any additional to the side yard if...
I asked for the overall design for 6,900 square feet.
Well, if, I, I haven't made that design, I haven't made that design yet. And I haven't decided what system...
Well, then you answered me incorrectly, did you not?
No, I didn't.
I asked you, would there be more than two units? I did not say to the side yard for 6,900 square feet.
Okay, I don't, I don't know, but I will say that probably, those two units are going to remain, and that was the question, and that's the issue that the board would have to decide on, because they're within that setback.
So, okay, that is a different answer than what I was asking.
There's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of solutions.
If you would like, there is some, if you would like access to my photo, there is some kind of unit. Don't know if it's an AC unit.
But Ms. Nugent, before we try to look at that, are you able to email that to the board?
Oh, definitely.
Can you email it to Sonia? Because then I'm going to mark it as an exhibit if we're going to use it.
Sure.
Can you do it, like, tonight?
Sure.
But in, in, any rate...
Will it help you to see that picture to determine what's on the side?
You know, according to Mike, anything that's there, we're not going to be using.
Well, let's, let's just see, see what's there, so we can make, make, make a definitive statement.
All right, so we're going to mark, for the record, we're going to mark this as a one. Ms. Nugent's going to tell us what that is, though, okay? Photo of what?
I don't know specifically what it is, but I have...
Photo of the side of the house, like, uh, northwest corner? I'm sorry, but the picture is from what?
From our house to the side of Mr. Ewing's.
Okay.
And it displays the side.
Okay, why don't you show it to Mr., Mr. Dorn?
I didn't know it existed either.
We'll show it to you.
We can decide whether, what the deal is with it.
So what are we doing right now? We sending it to, are we going to show Mr. Dorn? So we can answer a question about it?
You're going to send it to Sonia?
I'll send it right now.
I know, but let's ask Mr. Dorn.
Yeah, you can ask Mr. Dorn, yes.
You can ask Mr. Dorn about it, just have to send it to Sonia sometime.
Yeah, just pass it to Mike and all of them. You couldn't do that now, anyway.
Yeah.
Right.
That's what I was looking for.
Yeah, okay, all right. Okay, let's just show it to Mr. Dorn, so we can...
So here are the two AC units, and then this is the southern unit. You can blow it up, because it's nine.
That looks to me like some, one of those plastic cabinet, like, to put outdoor furniture in.
No, there's, I go into it, and it has a fan. So it looks like an old AC unit. I just took it recently, like, this last week, yeah. Because of concern and trace.
I, I don't know what that is, but I don't think we're going to be using that.
So that's going to be eliminated?
Yeah, I, I believe so.
Well, not, not believe, you got to say yes or no.
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll eliminate that.
Okay.
Well, I'm just going to make a note, Mr. Chairman, we'll eliminate the quote "box", because I'm targeting some actual something or other.
Right, right. Make a note on that, but yeah, we got to know whether it's going or staying.
Yes, I almost see one there.
Right, I think I know what this is.
Tell Mr. Dorn.
Just recognize yourself, identify yourself, sorry for the record.
Michael Ewing, applicant. And you're still under oath from the badge, and you're still under oath.
Mr. Michael, can you please go to that table and use that microphone? Thank you.
Sometimes we see units in small apartments. I used to see them in China all the time. They're tiny little, they're narrow, either air conditioning or heating or both, maybe even a heat pump. And that's what that looks like to me.
I don't know whether it's off.
Okay.
Doesn't look like it.
Okay.
But it's going to be on anyway.
Yeah.
Is there some repeat from those?
No, Ms. Nugent.
We can't pick, we can't pick that up.
We, you gotta, we're only going to ask questions to Mr. Dorn at this time. And anybody, Mr. Dorn is represented and counsel is represented, that whatever that box is, it's going to be eliminated and disappears. Okay, any other members of the public with questions? Mr. Dorn. Seeing none, hearing none, close the public portion. Board members, any questions to Mr. Dorn at this point? Mr. Slate, any questions?
No, no questions.
I, I do want something you were talking about. So, Mr. Dorn, can we bring back up the, on the floor plan, the second floor proposed What sheet number is that? Because you can't see it from here.
A 1.2.
A 1.2, okay. So, so, Mr. Dorn, on A 1.2, the addition over the existing garage.
Yes.
Right? Is that going to go straight up?
Yes.
From the exterior wall?
Yes.
All right. The reason I ask that is, the, the engineer's plan, and I'm sorry, we're just picking up on this, but it just occurred to me. David, if you look at the engineer's plan, she shows 49.89 feet to that corner of the garage with the 50-foot required setback.
Okay, so if you're going straight...
So if you're going to go straight up, I think you have a front yard variance on the second floor.
I have, it's 50.01 existing.
I have...
No, she's showing 50.01 proposed to that new garage addition, right? And then look to the right, there's a line that shows, at that left corner, it shows 50.09 feet existing.
Yeah.
And then look to the right corner.
Where it's 49.89.
And it's 49.89 existing and proposed, right? So, so it, it's the minimus.
Right. I get, I get what you're saying.
But at that corner, because it's an existing structure, right?
Because it goes straight up.
Yeah, I think, I think your planner just needs to address that as well, okay?
Okay. Could I just ask you a clarifying question on what was referred to in the course of the conversation that just was brought in, is the parking issue that you're attempting to solve for? I think that was Mr. Wade brought up a good point in terms of number of cars that can park just in that driveway run heading down, not excluding the pad, once you get to the bottom and can go to the right. On my site visit there, I mean, I would think in that driveway, you could stacked up, just going down the main drive, probably fit four cars.
You probably could, but what I was, what I'm trying to do...
And then on the pad itself, you could probably park another four, I mean, for my, I, I, upon my site is, I was surprised at how much parking there actually was, so I'm not sure what the parking issue is that you're trying to solve for.
Well, because if you have cars parked there, I'm trying to create a non, you know, chaotic parking scenario where if you can get down on, on the, on the parking court, you can have, you know, three or four cars that just point at, if somebody is in the parking court and, and they want to leave, and there's three or four cars in the way, they will have to back out.
And I think, Mr. Dorn, you said something about the Springbrook and the parking situation on Springbrook, you didn't elaborate. Can you go through that a little bit?
Sure, and the topography is, is pretty steep there. So if a car's backing up, and they're looking each way to see if the car is coming, then, you know, it, I think it's kind of awkward. You, you may not, but...
Does Springbrook have parking on both sides?
I don't think they have any sides.
What do you mean?
I don't think you, I, I mean, if you park a car, like, right across the street from Mike's, it's, it's kind of been right in the street.
Is there parking permitted on both sides?
Yes.
I don't know.
Yes.
Okay.
But even if it, it is permitted, that, that doesn't mean it, it functions well, because it wouldn't function well. It's pretty narrow, and then, like, especially where Mike's is, it's, it's kind of steep onto his property. And, you know, I don't think you'd, like, if you parked on the street in front of his house, the passenger, if you, if you kept the car over as much as you could, the passenger on the, on the hillside, on the house side, would be pretty steep there. Listen, I, I designed to make it, to make, I think, as right. What you're saying is absolutely correct, you could put four cars there.
If you're having a party, or, you know, some people may have to jockey their cars around so people could leave, but that's nothing that's a hard, abnormal.
When we, when we thought about the, the distance between the house, house garage and the, and the other garage, you know, I said, you, you need a minimum of 30, 35 feet for a, a good turnaround. So we, we had a nice separation in there anyway, and it creates, just a, a really nice scenario for parking, that's all. Whether, whether it's something that has to be or doesn't have to be, it seemed to work, and, and it didn't, it didn't push us over on the lot coverage or the building coverage, so I think it's, I think it's a win-win for the property and for the neighborhood.
All right, thank you. Any other board members with questions? Do you want to take a five-minute recess? We'll take a five-minute recess.
Yes. Next witness is Celia DeHuff. Celia is a landscape architect.
Oh, just a second, before we get started, we have to be roll call again.
Mr. Colbert?
Here.
Captain Amber.
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Mr. Benoit?
Here.
Mr. Kramer?
Here.
Mr. Slate?
Yeah, here.
Mr. Olow?
Here.
And I'm from the same town, yeah.
Okay, now we can get started.
Okay, would you please stand, raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you will give to this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And would you state your full name, spell your last name, please?
Celia DeHuff, D-E-H-U-F-F.
Thank you, you can say it, thank you.
Okay, Celia, could you share with the board your educational and professional background, and what certifications and licenses you hold?
So I have a license, I'm a licensed landscape architect, and I've been a licensed landscape architect for more than 20 years, and I'm a graduate of the Rutgers Program of Landscape Architecture.
And how are you employed?
Self-employed, I have my own business.
Okay, and doing what?
As a landscape architect.
Okay. And is your license as a landscape architect currently valid?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I ask that Mr. Alfie accept that as an expert in landscape architecture.
I will do that.
Mr. DeHuff, I ask that you please speak into the microphones, so we can hear your thing. Sure. Is that better? Thank you. Okay.
Celia, we have up on the screen, I think it would be A 10, an exhibit. Did you prepare that?
I did.
Okay, and tell the board what it is and, and what shows.
So this is the landscape plan for the Ewing residence. I'm just going to go clockwise, and Chris will kind of follow with the pointer of where I am, starting at the front of the home. There are some existing mature pines that will be preserved, and we're doing an underplanting of Sheanoides rhododendrons, which is a nice soft white, uh, white rhododendron that will frame the house. There are established shrub orders to the east and west of the front lawn, and we're going to selectively prune those and add pachysandra, so that we have a continuous frame around the semicircular front lawn panel. In front of the home, there are some nice hollies that are going to be preserved. All the overgrown and leggy plant material will, will be removed, and Alaska azalea boxwood and drifts of ferns and a stillby will be added, which will create a nice soft welcoming entry. And when planting the perimeter, I really looked at the surrounding architecture and the fenestration on the adjacent homes. So I really tried to think about how I could, you know, nicely screen in between the adjacent homes. On the left-hand side, I started with a green emerald arborite hedge.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
This diagram you have up here, Exhibit A 10?
Right.
That's based on the plans that, with the study, the new study in the...
The office on the...
The new office. So, is it going to be modified based upon retaining the old office, and how's it going to be modified?
Um, well, let me just go clockwise, and then when I get to that section, so I'm kind of going around the house, when I get there, I'll show you. I don't really think I need to make any modifications over there, because there were some, there are two large trees over there that we're keeping, and it just had an understory planting, so it's really not going to change much over there at all.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll get over there.
So currently you're along the left-hand property line, along the driveway?
Right, yes. So on the left-hand side, I started with a green emerald arborite hedge, which will be planted at five to six feet, and will grow, be grown to an eight to 10-foot hedge, and we'll shear it flat at the top. So it'll just create a nice wonderful screen and provide privacy in between the two front yards and the driveways. Moving down the driveway, the arborite will sweep up as we transition to a larger arborite, and that will be planted at 10 to 12 feet and be grown to 15 feet. And again, that'll be shared flat, so it'll be a hedge running down the side of the driveway, and it'll sweep up to a larger hedge. That view line is then ended with a large green giant... Moving down the driveway, the arborvitae will sweep up as we transition to a larger arborvitae. And that will be planted at ten to twelve feet and be grown to fifteen feet. And again, that'll be shared flat, so it'll be a hedge running down the side of the driveway and it'll sweep up to a larger hedge. That view line is then ended with a large green giant arborvitae and spring blooming arrowwood viburnum.
Between the property line and the new garage pool house, right?
No, we're right here, right in between those two walls right there. So now we're dropping below that wall and there's an existing tree there, I think it's a six-inch caliper. So we are putting some double file viburnums under there, which will create a nice blooming understory and then growing some climbing hydrangeas up the building. Climbing hydrangeas are really pretty, they just, you know, they are a nice soft vine that is kind of a three-dimensional vine and has a really pretty spring hydrangea bloom on it. And the fact that this whole building is brick gives us the opportunity to do that in a lot of places, which is really nice. So moving further down the property line to the pool area, there's a triple hedge, which is a six-foot sheared green emerald arborvitae hedge, fronted with hydrangea and a low boxwood hedge, which is also mirrored on the other side of the pool. Now, the back property line is fairly dense, so all the existing plant material is going to remain. And additional limelight hydrangeas will be added and that will kind of make a more uniform back tree line and, you know, just fill in any gaps. And as we work our way up past that triple hedge that was mirrored on the other side, to the right-hand side of the property, we're going to plant fifteen-foot green giant arborvitae. They're planted to screen that side yard and they grow up to about forty feet. And this is a little bit of a shadier elevation, so these green giants will remain a little more feathery and open, which I think is, makes them a prettier plant, actually. Going up, that's the area that you were talking about, there's two large deciduous trees there. So again, I put the double file viburnums under there as an understory, because we have that upper level canopy with the two large trees and then the double file viburnum underneath.
So you have the ink bearing hollow there.
Yeah, they were there to screen the AC units.
Will they be installed now that we're just in a building wall or thing?
I don't think we're going to need them, no, probably not. I'll probably actually bring the stillby and the ferns around and just make it more of a garden area. So we can look at the plant slides, that'll give you a better idea of, you know, the overall planting theme. So.
Mr. Oliver, should we make this A-11?
Yes, A-11.
So I put up a few different pictures of the emerald green arborvitae, because we are really sharing these arborvitae and they were on the left-hand side and then by the pool. So it really gives you a nice green wall, it's a, you know, an evergreen hedge, stays kind of in its lane, it doesn't get too big. And it just gives you a really nice sense of privacy. Then if we move up, we have, I have a picture of the just to show the whole page. See on the page before, so we have the arrowwood viburnum and the double file viburnum, they're used as understories, so they're.
We told you twenty, we can't read them from here.
Okay, well, you can zoom in then.
Please zoom in.
So, yeah, if you're not familiar with them, they're just, you know, really beautiful flowering shrub that blooms in the spring, kind of a dogwood flower and just creates a really nice understory. And they also have a fairly thick branching habit, so it gives a kind of a nice filtered screen in the winter as well. And then to the right is the climbing hydrangea and that is what's going to be grown up the building in a lot of different areas that really like just softens and breaks up, you know, just the different pieces of architecture. The hydrangeas are down by the pool, the little quick fires, just kind of gives you on the right, an idea of what that little boxwood hedge looks like. Go down to the bottom again, maybe. Boxwood, everybody knows what boxwood is. Limelight hydrangea and the red maple go on that back property line, the most southern line. And if you go to the next page, you know, this is the azaleas and the rhododendrons and the stillby and it just kind of gives you a sense of the nice soft palette, very kind of, I don't, for lack of better words, Hampton-y looking, gardeny looking, cottaging looking, really just softens the whole house and, you know, just makes it look friendly and welcoming.
If you could, Celia, could we go back to the first, the landscape plan? Explain just so we're clear, because we've got the variances for the side yard. What's going, again, now that we've seen the pictures?
Yes, yes.
What's going between the pool house garage, carriage house garage structure and the property line?
Okay, so, right, right, so those are the double file vib, there was already an existing six-inch caliber tree there, so I wanted to save that. So I left that there and I'm planting the understory of the double file viburnum. The double file viburnum are, they're fairly large flowering shrub, I mean, they grow to about twelve feet, probably like twelve feet, twelve to fourteen feet high, twelve to fourteen feet wide. So they'll really fill in that area and also we have that climbing hydrangea growing up the building. And if you zoom out a little bit, Clarissa, because really.
If you use the microphone on the test, please.
Over here. So if you look. There we go. If you, if you look at, where are we? So in here, yeah. What were, we were looking in here, the double file viburnum. Yeah, so if you look at the fenestration here, so this is the neighbor's house. So basically, there are a row of windows under here and they are all covered with a mountain laurel. Then there's one little window up here and then there's a kind of a glassed-in porch here. But this is also lower than the area up here at Mr. Ewing's house. So if you really look at the direction they're looking and what they're looking at, everything is pretty nicely screened and there's a huge maple right here.
It's at the eighteen inch or thirteen?
That's the eighteen inch, yeah.
And how high will the shrubs along the driveway in that wall area, how high will they get?
So these are going up to fifteen feet in here. And they're elevated and there's that solid green.
I don't have any further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Board members, any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much, Mr. Huff, for going through that very carefully. And I'm somewhat familiar with just about every single plant that you identified. But I want to also make sure that those that are going on either side of the house that screen the neighbors, that that doesn't cause any additional work, if you will, for the neighbors in terms of leaves falling or any cleanup that they would have to do, just because of that.
Yeah, that's why I planted the emerald green, because they stay very tight and they're very controlled. And really, the only place that we'll be sharing them is off the top. Just because I don't, they're a plant that grows with a pointed top, if you're familiar with them, and I just don't like the way they look with pointed top. I like that straight hedge, it's much prettier and cleaner looking.
Great, thank you.
Question about the retained walls, this may, I may have missed this in a previous meeting or I'm not sure if there was testimony provided, but what's the face of the walls or what type of walls are going to be constructed, you know, on the retained walls around the property? Is that a question?
That was the engineer.
I think we reviewed that in the previous meeting, go back and take a look at my notes on that.
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay, I just want to make sure it was covered.
Just a quick question, as part of your design, landscape design services, do you also get involved with the lighting of the landscaping or is that someone else in the project?
Sometimes I do, yeah, sometimes I prefer it if I do, because I don't like an aggressive landscape lighting plan. So, and I don't know if there'll be one or not, so that's not something that's been discussed.
Okay, I know, I mean, all the plantings are phenomenal, I know, sometimes people choose to uplight them at night so they can look, you know, so I don't know if that was part of the plan or.
No.
Okay.
No, it was not.
Any other members of the board with questions?
Mr. Chairman, I don't recall whether there were trees being moved and then having to be replaced and what, whether the replacement formula meets the requirements for the work that you're doing.
As a homestead lot, the tree orders would not apply, it's a home with a lot of existing homeowners.
Thank you.
Any other board member with questions? Any members of the public with questions?
We had no access to this plan prior, so this is the first that we're seeing of it. And you're planting a lot along the borders of the property. Have you taken into account what is right on that border in our property that's already existing? Like two chubby trees that are maybe forty years old? And you're going to be digging and putting a lot of plantings right in their root systems?
Yeah, I've been to this site multiple times and the large trees are marked on the plan and I was very careful to just do understory around them. I don't know where the cherry trees are that you're referring to.
Are right next to them.
Okay.
On the three cherries, there are two cherries. Then we have a whole hedge and the cherries are much larger. We have a whole hedge of laurels and we are, our property is a lot higher, so our deck looks down on to the backyard of Mr. Ewing. So this will provide no screen for our property to pool and to the patio.
You can ask a question.
Okay, so I am concerned and I'm asking, did you take into account of all our established plantings of almost forty years that are right there on the property line?
I did and I put the green giants over by the cherries and they're going in a bit smaller and it's a very shady area, so they are going to grow, as I said before.
The cherries are here.
Right, that's where the arborvitae is are.
So what, these are the vibes.
They are.
Which will have a better root system.
They don't have a huge root system, no. Well, I think we said we were putting them in at ten to twelve feet, so the root ball is not going to be ten to twelve foot, arborvitae might have like a thirty-inch root ball. Not like putting in a big maple or anything like that, you're not going to have a six-foot root ball.
And the back right, there are existing two very large evergreens on Mr. Ewing's property, I think there are two.
Yeah.
They're gone?
They're coming out.
They're coming out.
There's one green giant arborvitae that's there now and it just looks kind of to me, kind of ridiculous, because it's just sitting there by itself and it.
It provides a lot of screen.
Yeah, well, yes, it does and there's a triple hedge going in instead of it. We're not taking something out and not putting anything back in and I really am super, super conscious of everything that's existing there, but I did think that that one arborvitae that was there just completely looked out of place.
It's a great concern for our plantings. Thank you.
Any other members of the public with questions? No questions close to, okay, Mr. Wade. Richard Wade, my book. Your planting schedule or whatever you call it, has that been submitted as an exhibit?
Yes, it's on the plan.
It's on the plan?
Yeah.
And?
To the right.
This left side of the property, I assume the dark line is a wall?
Yes.
And plants that are on Mr. Ewing's side of the property, will they be the same height of the wall or higher than the wall?
They'll be higher than the wall. The arborvitae planted on the inside?
Yeah.
You mean between the two walls, the two lines, Mr. Wade? Where are you talking about?
Let's start with the initial, one line.
Okay.
Okay, so those are our providers, we're putting them in at five to six feet and growing them to eight to ten. And then as we go down the property and we hit that double wall, we're putting them in at ten to twelve and growing them to fifteen with that sheared hedge that I showed a picture of. So it will swoop up and it'll be a very nice kind of manicured sheared hedge in between the two properties. And, yeah.
Understand he's there now?
What is there now? Yeah, there's kind of a mishmash of stuff that's there now. We're, yes, yes and no. There's one large tree there we're going to preserve and then it's kind of, just kind of a mixed shrub border, nothing really
What's the?
Great looking.
Dark wall is a wall and then I assume then there's the trees and then there's the pavement?
Yes, between the pavement and that, that single wall.
Right.
One point eight feet, which is one foot nine and a half inches.
Right now, it's one point ago, look at the property in the day, like would that be, that whole side be screened with shrubbery of some kind?
Yes.
And you're taking all of that out?
Not what is on the neighbor's side of the property, no.
So you can only touch the, Mr. Ewing's side of the property?
Of course, yeah.
And you're going to leave the other side, obviously?
Yeah.
When that wall becomes a reality, you know how deep that might be as far as digging?
It depends on the construction of the wall and that would be a question that you would have to ask the engineer. I don't know, I did not draw the walls, so I don't know what she plants on and I don't know if it's been decided of what they're making them out of, so different walls have different requirements.
The depth of that wall indicated a problem with any plantings alongside that property line?
I am, I think that there's definitely something that needs to be done around that eighteen-inch tree, yes. And we have done things in the past, depending on the construction of the wall. In the past, if there was a masonry wall, we built a linteal over the, into the footing over the roots of the trees. We've done a lot of different things to address large trees to make sure that they survive. And it's a maple, so I mean, it's not an oak, which is very difficult to work around, but it is a maple and there are a lot of things that we do and we really, really, really.
Are these trees going to require any type of maintenance by the joint property owner?
No.
Are they going, are the branches going to be growing over the wall into the other property?
The arborvitae, no, they're that sheerred green hedge that we, that I showed you a picture of. So we just shear it at the top and they stay tight all the way down.
And what if it comes, that looks like a double wall?
Yes.
And what is the distance between the two walls?
That one, I do not know, three feet.
And that's what you have to be planting between the three feet?
Yeah, same thing, it's the hedge, but I'm just putting them in a larger size, because I have more room for a larger root ball, so that. So that I'm
I will survive between the two walls?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And if you could bring that diagram down a little bit? What was Now, the wall, does that curve to the right towards the garage area?
Yes.
And what are you planting in that little cubby hole there where the
So
Two walls are together?
So I kind of ended that view with a larger green giant arborvitae so that it really, so if you look at the way that house is facing and then you see that green giant arborvitae, that really just kind of cuts the entire, that ends that whole hedge and ends their view right there. So it's a, a large evergreen.
A tall zikka.
So they get about 40 feet tall.
And where the wall stops and then
Below it.
Comes across at the end of the building.
Mm-hmm.
What's blocking the neighbor's view of the structure?
Well, they're, that green giant arborvitae is basically going to end their view there because as you can tell, that house is kind of facing out that way and everything's going that way. So you have that like very dense hedge and then you have a large evergreen. And then beyond that, you're not even really going to be able to see much. So there is an existing tree there that has a lot of upper canopy. And then I under, I wanted to save that, so I underplanted that with the double file viburnum, which is a very large blooming shrub. And then I also put the climbing hydrangea up the building. So that really just grows up the building and takes over and it's just this beautiful, like a leafy vine on the brick.
How high is that building, do you know?
I don't know, no. How high is that building?
I don't Do your plantings
It's two, two stories high. Uh, well, that tree already goes up, the, the tree will be as high as the building. The understory obviously will not, but it'll be about 14 feet, so it'll cover two thirds of the building. And the climbing hydrangea will just soften the whole building. It'll, you know, eventually will cover that whole facade.
You're saying that hydrangeas kind of go beyond the brick?
Yes.
And is any of this digging going to affect the existing plants on either side of the property?
No.
Not at all?
No. The one thing that I was concerned about is that 18 inch tree, but we're definitely, you know, have discussed what we can do to, to make that not an issue. We've done it before and we've been very successful because we're extremely cognizant of existing large trees.
And you don't know the effect of digging that wall, has the trees and shrubbery on the, on the
Well, we're not taking anything out that's not on our property.
With our cutting roots.
That, I don't, there's, I don't really know what's there. I mean, there's, they, you know, the tree is there, but as far as other shrubs and things like that, they'll, they'll, they'll be fine. Not everything, no. Not every plant.
Any other question? Yes.
Julie, 13210 Mount Kimball. Um, is this a garage here?
Yes, that's the
And down nears your garage?
Yes.
And I'm just wondering how does the car, the vehicle maneuver in this area and how does this get protected with? Is there a lot of K turns?
Mr. Chairman, that's not within
Yeah, you gotta limit the questions to
Okay, so how about protecting the, if the car is backing out, how are these shrubs or trees being protected from the cars?
Uh, there's a fence on that wall.
So who can I ask to maneuver to? Did I miss my opportunity?
You may have.
But
Yes, and it was
Well, I just want to know Will it be a lot of K turns? Just out of curiosity.
Yeah, I, I think Ms. Mueller addressed whether, how the traffic work.
All right, that's it. Thanks.
Any other members of the public with questions? Any board members with questions? Close the public portion. Any board members with questions? You said the root ball on the arborvitae that being planted along the, between the two garages. What is the size of those root balls for those, is there like
Um, the, up front, the, the lower ones are a smaller root ball. I mean, they're, they're plant, we're planting them at five to six. So I only have, I have less than two feet, so that root ball will probably be about, I don't know, I would say 18 inches.
Okay, and then when you get down to where there's the two walls?
Then I have more room. I have three feet.
Right, what are you planting there?
So the arborvitae, it's all part of the same hedge, but I
There's a taller one.
But yeah, I'm kind of, I'll gradually take it up, like swoop it up so that it's a nice transition. But I have the opportunity to plant a bigger arborvitae there, so I will.
What's your root ball on this?
Uh, I have three feet, so it's a, we're planting them at 10 to 12, so a 10 to 12 arborvitae is probably a little over two feet.
And if they're going to expand after the, the
Um, you know, they don't, they really don't get that big and they have a lot of room to get deep. It's not a root ball that, it's not like a maple that's expanding out. It's more of a shrub. So it does not expand out. It has plenty of room to grow in between those walls. The compact plant.
Same thing on the arborvitae being planted along by the pool?
Yes.
And by the cherry trees that Ms. Newt is referencing?
Yeah.
And do the cherry tree root structures, is that spread out? How does that?
They, they do spread a little bit more, but we have room over there to stagger the arborvitae. We have room to move the arborvitae away from the cherries, you know. Obviously, when we look at it, we're not going to cut into her cherry tree roots. I will be cognizant of that.
Yeah, and you said you took into account the existing plantings that were on her property?
I took into account, uh, yes, yes, I did. All the large trees that were marked.
Okay, and what about other pushers, shrubs, landscaping?
There, there's a lot over there. We're not going on to anybody else's property. So I was cognizant of where I put the plant material as in relation to the larger trees, but we're not taking out anything else that's over there. I mean, the larger trees would be the things that would have the root system that would be going into Mr. Ewing's property and other branches that were going into Mr. Ewing's property, not the, the landscape shrubs.
None of the plantings that you have proposed will cause happily maintained from anybody else's property?
No.
What about like this, you said the arborvitae could be made in the hedge, is that just along the top?
Yeah, it was just, it stays pretty tight, so you cut it on the top and then, yeah. They're not going to have to, it's not a spreading shrub. It's a fairly compact tailored shrub. I don't know how else to put it.
That's good, just a comment. I've sat on this board for a number of years and sat on other boards in other towns. That's, this is the most extensive landscaping plan I've seen. Okay, bye for now.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Mr. Wade?
No questions.
No.
I have nothing. Jay?
Mr. Chair, I just want, um, the, the lady from 210 Mount Kimball, you will have an opportunity to address your question, probably with the planner. Does she know what I'm talking about?
Question about turning around.
Drive, 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 way impact, yeah. We've closed the public portion. So unless council agrees to do that, this one question, you can reopen the portions. We can reopen it.
Sure, we're gonna
Okay, ask your question.
My name is Kerry Matthews. I'm a resident 15 minutes away directly facing the back of the property. Um, congratulations on trying to advance your home. But one, a couple of things I've had some smoke concerns to it is the way my kitchen at the bottom faces the back of the property. If, if house is getting up taller, will there be, will that have to be responsible to planting trees to shield any residents on the top floor looking down or would that be an issue of anything?
Do I get to ask that?
Well, you know, let's see if maybe Celia is the landscape architect can address what the tree situation is in the back of the property.
Um, well, everything that's in the back of the property is going to remain. We're not taking anything out. So I think you have a pretty, pretty dense tree line in there. I am adding a, a maple and some viburnums. But besides that, it's basically going to stay the same, exactly as it is now and will be a little denser with some more shrubs in there to make it a more contiguous line across the back.
Just raising a question because my wife is not here.
Sure.
And I just wanted to know if we, there is some elevation in the foundation. Anything to screen the block?
I, I don't think so. I mean, and you're a lot lower down there too. So, I mean, you're pretty low and there's a pretty dense tree line right in there. And I, I, I can't see her house even in the winter.
Question, Mr. Chair, if I may. Um, you said that you're going to plant a maple, right?
Yeah, on the left-hand corner, yeah.
And that wouldn't add any undue hardship to Mr. 15 minutes away? I don't know.
No.
Okay.
No.
Any other questions from board members? If not, we can go to the next witness.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the next witness is going to be Mr. Tobia, but I'd really like, he's going to take quite some time.
Right.
And I know why, quick, because I'm meeting 10 or a little after, and I don't think we're going to get through it. Took two hours almost to cross-examination of Mr. Dorn and Mr. Tobia's testimony is really important to this and has a lot of concepts I suspect will be a bunch of time for them. I'd rather frankly not put him on tonight and just come back another night and have him
Go start the finish. Um, can we make a request? There's a lot of members of the public and some of them are down by council. Uh, can we get Mr. Tobia's report in writing ahead of time? So that people have the opportunity to view it, digest it, and then maybe have a better idea of what he's saying as, as the testimony comes in.
Yeah, I, I kind of have a bullet point outline of what he's going to do. We can probably put together something that, not an official report for, you know,
A bullet point outline?
Yeah, bullet point outline, yeah.
Council, would that be okay with you?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
And we'll have that 10 days before the hearing?
Yes.
We don't know when that hearing is going to be yet, but something tells me it's going to be down the road anyway.
I am going to ask since we're providing Mr. Urson with a bullet point outline of our expert testimony, if he has an expert, if he can provide me with some heads up, the expertise, what that testimony is going to be.
What's good for the goose is good for the gatherer?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, all right. Um, yeah, we, uh, the, the time between this meeting and the next meeting, we have a series of exhibits to upload. So I think that will actually speed up the testimony of Ms. Sellers. And we, we probably have one expert report that we can share today.
Please, please do.
Will that be a planner, Mr. Urson?
What's your plan?
Is that going to be a planner?
Probably not. No, um, no.
Okay.
Do you plan on calling a professional planner?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
You want a date, Mr. Frank?
Yes.
For the hearing.
I understand.
The earliest that I could accommodate you is August.
Ooh.
August 26th.
And it's not the whole night?
And it's not the whole night.
You say the 26th? I'm in Minnesota.
I'm in Maryland.
I'm in Orleans.
I'm in New Jersey, lucky me. So then it's September.
But if we, do we carry this for purposes of notice to like the next meeting at some point, just a minute now and then? Talk about some other way to speed this up. It started in December. I know this board is busy and and I know the difficulties in that, but
We could do that, but I don't know what that's going to end up.
I don't either. I talked to my client about another special meeting, but it's a significant dollar amount in Morris County.
Yeah, and I'm not sure the board's going to be too happy to do that in the summer.
But it's air conditioned, you know.
Yeah, I know, but getting a quorum for that is, is, it's just more difficult in the summer months, that's all, yeah.
Nothing in July?
July is cold.
No meeting?
Oh, yes, there are
No, the meeting's fall, yeah.
The meeting is fall, yes.
So the next one's August.
Yeah, like I say, I'm in, I'm in Minnesota.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's September.
That will be September, my next one.
I mean, a special would be, you know, two weeks before, roughly, right, before the September meeting. If you look in the middle of September. So all you, it would save you is two weeks. And I don't know that you're going to finish either because, you know, you have Mr. Tobia who's going to take most of the night probably. And then we have objectors who are going to have witnesses, so you're pro, at least two more meetings.
Or at least one more, let's not be pessimist.
Well, I think he's won by himself, yeah. Yeah.
Mr. Phil's today, the 3:00 buck this morning.
Yeah.
I don't know, I'd, I'd still like to carry, like, a closer meeting and talk about whether there's any way to get a special can't get a quorum because it's December, that we can't do it, we can always announce it again, yeah.
We could, we could give it a run, for sure.
Do that?
Yeah, sure, we can, we can try, but that, you know.
Right.
That's why we're missing two tonight, right, so
Right. I've been doing this long enough to recognize that problem.
Yeah.
So our regular meeting is June 24th.
Let's carry to that and then we'll
For the purpose of just meeting, discussion.
Schedule, right? Rest for scheduling.
Just for scheduling.
Okay, so for the members of the public, what all of that meant is that this meeting's being adjourned now. It will be continued on June 24th at 7:00 PM in this room with no further notice from the applicant, but for the sole purpose of announcing a new continuing hearing date, which will be sometime after June 24th.
Thank you very much, everyone.
You're welcome. Do we need any kind of an extension?
We may. Why don't we extend through September? That's, that's where we were heading anyway, so.
I'll get an email or letter after some
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Good, I think I have
Okay. Yeah, and just Dave, if there are new plans or something in the future, 10 days ahead of time, yeah.
We've had some concerns. We'll get them in. Jim's office can double check the numbers that you got tonight.
Yeah.
Send them to them.
Yeah, yeah, and who's something else? Oh, the landscape plan.
Yeah, I'll make sure it gets sent over.
Well, not only emailed, but I think there should be hard copies so that the board can have it.
Okay, I'll make sure that's
Okay. I know you might not be here at the next meeting, but the board may, should still be able to look at it.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
You should see me with the... You shouldn't see me with the...
Lee, you're not objecting.